Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I get to start off our presentation, which everybody should have a copy and it's on the screen. We want to start off by thanking a lot of people that helped us get this report together for you. Of course, we had guidance from the commissioners and county staff. We received information from a variety of counties across the state. The Animal Advisory Board shared their survey data with us early, and we're very appreciative of that. And we'd like to thank the animal advocates, you know, that are passionate about animal welfare in Burke County for their comments and feedbacks and emails. This is some pictures of your current animal shelter on Hertzsey Drive. As you can see, it's -- there's a lot of background information in your packet, almost 700 pages that correlates with this summary. But these are some photos of the current condition of the facility that was built in '74. Doesn't look like much has been done to it since the '70s. This is the interior. Some -- you see quite a bit of damage there. We have 39 recommendations for you to consider. The recommendations for the facility part of the presentation, we would like to recommend that the board consider appropriating $15,000 or more for minor renovations or repairs to this facility to make it as efficient and welcoming and comfortable for staff and the animals until a permanent solution is determined. We would recommend that these be done within the next 90 days. We also recommend that the office furniture in the animal shelter be replaced within the next 90 days, as it's in about the same condition as the shelter itself. Next, we recommend that the computers and software at the facility be updated within the next 30 days to handle the demands and needs of using modern social media practices. Moving on, we also recommend that an RFQ be issued to find a firm with extensive animal shelter building expertise and animal welfare experience to conduct a facility needs assessment to learn exactly what the true needs for a shelter is now and would be in the future. Once the RFQ process is complete, a firm would be selected and hopefully funding appropriated anywhere from $5,000 to $25,000 or whatever amount you determine is appropriate at the April board meeting. Further, we recommend that the county explore a variety of funding options for a new animal center, and those, you know, can range anywhere from grants, loans, fundraising, pet licensing fees, municipal participation, pay-as-you-go bonds. So that's really, you know, there's a lot of ways it could be financed. We'd also recommend that staff work with the finance department to research methods and procedures that we would need to implement to allow citizen groups and nonprofits to contribute money to construction of a new animal services center, to ensure that the process is smooth as possible with the IRS. I understand there's been some changes lately, and we just want to make sure everybody was able to take full advantage of any taxable deductions. Would you all like for us to entertain questions on each section or at the end? Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to turn it over now to my cohort and partner in crime, Mr. Lance Riddle, to do the next section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next section is the organizational structure. These recommendations seek to provide you with ideas for next steps, kind of based off the facility, then after you sort that, you move into organizational structure. The first recommendation is that an animal services department should be placed under the direct authority of the county manager. This would ensure flexibility and being able to do a whole lot of stuff you may not be able to do right now. It is also recommended that the Burke County Sheriff's Office continue animal control and enforcement operations, but with the day-to-day operations of a center conducted by county staff. And then we also recommend initially you have three full-time employees for this center, one director, one animal coordinator, and then one animal technician or something kind of comparable to that. We also recommend the creation and encouragement of a robust volunteer program. We think that should be implemented as soon as possible, because volunteers across the state of North Carolina work in animal shelters and animal centers and provide a whole host of services, both that benefit the public and the animals. And these folks, they can be advocates in our community and really champion the cause of animals in a way they may not be able to now. And then moving forward, the current Burke County animal shelter, they use an inmate, and the suggestion and recommendation that we have now is that in the future to not use inmate labor at the shelter, because the presence of an inmate is inconsistent with our vision to make the shelter a welcoming, vibrant place for individuals and families to interact with center staff and their prospective pets without anxiety or trepidation. The next section is...
Thank you, Lance. The next section is operations. And we are recommending that the Burke County Animal Service Center be open Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Adoptions for the public and rescue agencies would take place from noon until 6:00 p.m. daily. And in keeping with our motto, all about advancing and good public relation practices and public feedback, we're recommending that the sale of animal carcasses stop. We're also recommending that the animal services staff develop standard operating procedures to ensure consistency of service, equitable treatment of animals and the public, and to have a guide for everyday procedures within the first 30 days or less.
Thank you, Kay. The next section is education and marketing, and basically this is ways that a new animal services department and a center can be engaged with the community and community partners to provide services and kind of tell our story, if you will. So one of the first things that an animal services department can do, and they are encouraged to do so, is to utilize and be engaged with social media platforms such as Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, what have you. Really what this will do is ensure that animals are visible and have an increased chance of being adopted, reduce euthanasia, and reduce the number of animals that are housed on a daily basis in the shelter. Next, staff, it's recommended that staff should frequently post pictures of animals that are up for adoption on social media. This will engage the community, or you can also engage the community by having an animal of the week event that highlights a certain animal at the center with a short write-up and a picture, and this is just another way to further be engaged with the community and to encourage folks to adopt animals. And then additionally, social media should be used to inform the community about any public and shelter events. Social media should also be used to inform the public about early closing and changes in hours, basically anything that we can do to get the word out and inform people about what we're doing. Burke County Animal Services should frequently post and update their section of the Burke County website with relevant information and connect the public to animal resources in the county. And in conjunction with social media, you should also, or they should also be posting pictures of adoptable animals to the website, not just social media. And then another way to encourage engagement and get the word out, the website should have a community calendar section to let the public know in advance of any events that are going on in the county. It is further recommended that staff work with groups such as Reason, vets, and foster groups to inform the public about any spay and neuter events and services, further utilizing social and traditional media. Staff should work and collaborate with Burke County Public Schools and Reason to expand educational programs offered at schools, and then send spay and neuter literature home with students that can show their parents or their church group or what have you. And it's also recommended that presentations be made to local civic groups and rescue organizations to inform the public about the importance of spaying and neutering their animals and the resources and services that are available. So this next slide is some ideas and recommendations of low or no-cost education and marketing ideas that could be implemented. For example, K-9 with a cop day, and I can't remember what state this was in.
Nebraska.
Nebraska, great state of Nebraska, where once a month, an adoptable dog will spend a portion of the day riding with a police officer and being able to meet members of a community, and essentially that's just a way to highlight an adoptable animal and to kind of get them out in the community, not just at a shelter. Another recommendation, low or no cost, is to feature adoptable pets at Burke County Board of Commissioners meetings. You could have a photo, or you could bring the actual animal, to be presented and promote and encourage adoptions in the county, and with buy-ins, this recommendation can also be extended to the municipalities in Burke County, so we don't have to do this alone. It can be other folks as well. And then animal services can also partner with county departments and other municipalities to advertise services on digital signs to increase awareness of animal services, adoptions, and spay and neuter services. Now, these marketing recommendations do have some costs behind them, but it's also worthy of consideration and recommendation. The Burke County animal shelter can further increase their visibility by utilizing billboard space on I-40. That is a way to, essentially, people driving in the highway, a big blow-up picture of some dogs and cats and all sorts of things to get the word out. Animal services could also reach out to local news media for free or reduced advertising, public service announcements, and continuing that pet of the week recommendation. And then additionally, Burke County could partner with Reason, local vets, and foster groups to develop a free spay and neuter day, because as we all know, spaying and neutering in the county is something that needs to be addressed, and doing something like this, and really all these recommendations are ways to get the word out, not only about adoption, but why folks should spay and neuter their pets as well. And then finally, Burke County could look into hiring a marketing firm to rebrand the image of the animal shelter, the animal services department and the animal services center, and in addition, you promote spay and neuter education and services to the county at large.
Thank you, Lance. The next section is adoptions. We're recommending that the animal services staff research home fostering opportunities. This would allow those who are not affiliated with a rescue group to have the opportunity to foster an animal in their home. This will free up space at the center, help animals find a permanent home, and help socialize animals. I found a number of counties in North Carolina have a good fostering program. Also, we recommend that the animal services staff research and evaluate current adoption fees to ensure that the price is not hindering anyone from adopting an animal from the center. Based on some of the information we gathered, we were like the second highest of the responses that we've seen. I believe it was $125 is what we're charging.
That's correct. In Onslow County, I think, charges $140, and they were the only one that was higher than us.
We further recommend that staff research the prospect of approved rescue groups pulling animals that have been deemed aggressive by staff to be evaluated by an animal behavioral Further, as we've previously stated, we would like to see adoptions for the public and rescue agencies take place from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on their days daily, which was Tuesday through Saturday. Animal services staff should also research and evaluate any changes that may be needed to the Burke County animal ordinance, whether it's about adoption process or just general changes to the ordinance to make it more equitable or clearer for citizens and staff. And of course, any change to the ordinance would, should occur with ample research, public input, and direction from the Board of Commissioners. We also believe that a trap-neuter-return program should be implemented to address the varial community cat issues. And lastly, on adoptions, we're recommending that, as part of that animal ordinance review, to assess whether or not that section on the cat colony registration be reviewed to gauge whether it's still viable. I think we have one participant that's registered their cat colony. And that is the end of our 39 recommendations.
Gentlemen, you've heard one well of a presentation. A lot of work went into this, and I'll talk about that in a few moments. So let's open it up for questions at this time that you may have.
Did we address the present staff at the shelter in any of this?
They provided a lot of data for us. Is that what you mean?
Not exactly. I think the present staff, I don't want to say they're burnout, but I think they've just got sort of numb to what's going on at the shelter, and I think maybe a staff change would be good for, I think the public would welcome that. I think that the staff has done a good job, but, and I also think, as we look at the sheriff's department and some of his needs, that that staff could be very well put to work in deputies that they need of that rank or whatever in his lineup of officers. But the things I hear in the community is just, I think your staff is burnt out. I mean, they've grown numb to this, I mean, for so many years. I think we probably need to make a staffing change.
We addressed that in there, and that is our recommendation, is to let these deputies go back to the sheriff, and we're recommending that we hire three staff, and that those three staff come under the jurisdiction of the county manager. There'd be titled an animal director, what was the cycle, animal director and...
Animal shelter coordinator.
Animal technician and a what?
Animal shelter coordinator.
Animal shelter coordinator.
I think that probably needs to be one of the first things that we do in the new, looking at the shelter as a new entity or whatever.
That is one of the main recommendations, matter of fact. Good observation. Other questions?
This chairman and I have several. Would like to do a couple of comments first, if I may. When we visited Friends for Family, he shared the budget that he has, and he's a volunteer organization, and that budget was $22,000 a month. And I want to go back also and say that the people who wrote us all those letters, and as Norman Vincent Peale would say, some of them were two months. But evidently, we as a board failed in completing our task on those animal control rules. If I recall correctly, and Mr. Manager, if I'm incorrect, correct me, but when we did those things, and we passed them after months of good, hard work, and they looked good to me, but one of the things we did promise, and I don't think we followed up on, was to have some joint meetings occasionally and tweak those rules and policies, and we failed to do that. So, you know, for those people who care for those animals and has brought it to our attention, we kind of, in my mind, deserve it a little bit. I also read with some interest that in the contract, that the city of Morganton was to pay us $9,700 per year, and if we ever have in a contract or amend that as prices went up and the cost went, is it still $9,700, or is it any?
I would assume this is the way it was originally, based on the usage of the facility. So there needs to be changes. We can look at that, but, you know, the ordinance was developed in a manner to try and encourage more animals to be adopted, and there were expectations for the current staff to have done some development of SOPs and things that weren't done, and that's been some issues. And I've had meetings with the sheriff and talked to them about additional staff, and that didn't seem to go anywhere, and I asked multiple times, and sheriff is just ready to be out of the animal control business, although they would remain in the field picking up animals and enforcing the ordinance, but the actual shelter operations itself would be done by the staff that's been recommended, and the focus would be a little different than what it is currently.
Well, the other thing on that contract too, that I had a question about, was that the city agreed in that contract up to $100,000 for improvements, but it's not to exceed more than $25,000 per year. And I saw the figures that y'all presented to build the animal shelter, and I just, I kind of wanted to scream, and I'm wondering if we're sending the right message. You know, I can't come to Wayne's Restaurant and work six hours because he doesn't make enough money to pay his bills. And we're implementing and imposing ourselves to taxpayers to do what people who own animals should be doing for themselves. And just to any of money to correct that is going to be a lifelong, till Jesus comes back, of increasing the budget, increasing the employees, and every time you increase budget from this board, it goes back to our good citizens who gets their taxes increased. And, you know, as I have shared many times, many people who have lived in Arfaun County for 70, 80 years has paid more than what their house costs when they build it in taxes to the county. So, you know, I see where you're going and agree with a lot of it, but I think we need somehow or another, and we might need to start at second grade in school. I don't know where you're going to start, Brian, I really don't, but we need to educate responsibility all the way across the board, and for me to have to curtail my spending to help somebody else take care of an animal that they purchased and they agreed to take care of. So my point to that, Mr. Chairman, is if you bring a cat or a dog in, and we got to put it in an animal shelter, we'll keep it for 30 days, but you pay the bill. But we'll keep it 10 days, and if it don't move in 10 days, something else happens. Another question I had, we did away with the dog tax. How much would we have to charge for dog tax if we regenerated the kind of money that we're talking about? Because you're, again, we're forcing every citizen in Burke County, if they never owned a pet, to pay part of their income to maintain an animal hospital. And folks, that's headed the wrong way. I'm sorry. It's just, in many aspects, it's just not animal control either. So can we find out on those two questions about, okay. Let's see, page 84, and I don't even know what that is. Let me get to it. Oh, yeah, that, it talks about Lieutenant Steve Massey winning a great award.
He won a raffle. He won a raffle.
Yeah, and what?
He won a raffle.
Yeah, a raffle, which got us a free study, and we got a copy of that study, but I don't remember seeing that before. And did we properly congratulate him for getting that award?
I wasn't here then, Mayor. I wasn't here then.
You're supposed to go back and research this and remember all this. You know, the scores are higher for Burke County, and according to the research that you got, running five in one category, and I believe eight in the other of euthanasia of cats and dogs, and again, that's where we don't want to be. That needs to be improved, and I think we can improve that if we start letting people know that if you bring an animal, you're going to pay for it for 10 days, or whatever the committee selects. I don't know what's fair. I'm just throwing out some statistics. Population numbers are incorrect. In 1919, they list that at 94,000. We're not even at 91. We're barely above the 90,000 mark. And the other thing I wanted to share with the board, and hope it sinks in, we used to have 48 hours notice on material. When you hand me 700 and some pages on a late Friday or Monday to be prepared in one day for this meeting, that is unfair and unrealistic. And if it has 50 pages or more with it, Mr. Chairman, and it's not delivered to us by Thursday or Friday, it just, we, what is that saying? Bad planning on your part does not create an emergency on mine? And you, I know most of you are like me, I reviewed a lot of this, but I didn't get through it. I didn't do it complete. So we need to also, I know this is aside from the animal question, but it's created by the animal question. This much information, you need more time to be a good steward of Burke County's resources. And right now, I think that's all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Toad. Jeff?
Back to the organizational structure. One of the recommendations was we continue with the sheriff's office with the animal control operations. Could that not be handled as similar a fashion as we do with code enforcement, have a code enforcement officer or that type of individual that would be under the county management rather than still have two different organizations involved in this operation?
I think what I was told from years ago was when these non-sworn animal control officers knew that they were going into a less than pleasant environment, they would have to have the deputy go with them. So the decision, I think, was under Sheriff Ralph, that they just have deputies doing it since they were going out there with them. it since they were going out there with them anyways to answer these complaints or investigate and take animals. So, if you go outside of that and they're not deputized, if they see they're going into a hostile environment, they're probably going to have to call for a deputy to go with them.
Do we have any data that would indicate that, how often that's necessary? I mean, you know, if 95% of the time, a non-sworn person could do this, would that not be under better management long-term?
Yeah. I don't have figures to know how often they do run into problems, and since it's been this way so long, I don't know if folks have gotten kind of used to it. Like, if they know that the county's going to come after them for delinquent taxes, after a little while, they don't as many challenge it when they think they can get away with it than more of them do. So, I don't know.
I did ask Kay to look at that, and I think the information we got back from most of the counties, they were still relying on law enforcement to do the animal pickups. Now, doesn't mean that it has to be that way, but Kay, correct me if I'm wrong. I think our respondents, most of them, the sheriff still has, is in charge of animal control, picking up animals, correct?
On page 124 in the packet, there's a table that, from the respondents that we received that was sent to 100 counties, we got about 20 some back. As to who does what, as far as organizational structure, there's a lot of it where it's under the manager for the shelter, but someone else, you know, still has the animal control or they have it all. But yes, most of the time, it's just the shelter that, that the manager has or is a standalone department.
Jeff, you want me to check further and see if we can get some down on who's picking up, picking up the animals?
I think it would be interesting.
Okay.
We still, you know, I think you're still going to have the, I wouldn't say rub's the right word, but if you've got two different groups trying to manage this operation, but I mean, I'll always have the same perspective.
And I know if we do hire an outside group to do the due diligence for us, that has expertise in this area, they're going to be able to give us those statistics nationwide. You know, we've had a brief discussion with one that, you know, they've done this 300 times throughout the country, so that will be able to give us a great cross-section of what everyone does. Just as a quick point.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one very important question, and you can't answer it today. I'd love to have a little research on it before you get an answer. And what impact, both short-term and long-term, will this have on the volunteer organizations who do a good job with animal control at their own expense, have their own love and appreciation for animals? They're spending, two of them together are spending as much as the county is on animal control, and it doesn't cause taxpayer nothing. So, I would like to know the impact of long-term, short-term. Thank you.
I think the one thing we have to remember, this is just a preliminary report. The actual first thing that we're asking for under the recommendation is just to clean up the current facility that we got and wash it, clean it, get a professional group in there to get the smell and everything out of it, put some furniture in it, and put some computer equipment that works. The second step would be RFQ to find somebody to give us a needs assessment, which will take us way down the road as to where we want to go from there, which will still give us plenty of time to read what we have in our, it's a very lengthy report, obviously. We need to keep, continue to read that. So, the immediacy in front of us, or the immediate factor in front of us right now is the request for the $15,000 to clean up that place up down there, get it presentable, and then start working for the final plants that we need to go to. Other comments or questions for Kay, or Lance, or Brian? Okay, hearing none. Kay, I'm up to, from all the commissioners, and I think we all agree on this one, I've never seen us have such a detailed report as you two have given us. It is, I'm amazed, and I know Kay and I were trading emails sometimes at 10 o'clock at night about where we wanted to move and where we wanted to go. I can't thank you two enough for doing what you've done to get us to the point of where we're at right now, so we can start thinking about what we're doing in the future. All I can give you is a pat on the back and say, for both of you, say thank you very much. There's more work that needs to be done, but I hope the citizens of Burke County understand we have recognized what is an important issue to this county, and as I said before, we want to do this one time, and we want to do it the right way. Any other comments for commissioners? Mr. Manager, anything else?
No, sir.
All right. If there's no other questions, without rejection, this will remain on an item for decision.